Alright. Let me just check a few other items. Alright. Move that there. I got him, make sure. Alright. Let me see, testing, okay. So this is the, uh, wel- uh, welcome gentlemen, I hope everyone is doing well, this is the end of week thirteen. So next week will be the last of the new material, so what we're doing today is gonna be making our way through the homework for section three point one. The last section that we're gonna be doing, uh, section six point four, again, the homework has been there, there's, there's a recording of what I'm about to say, or at least the lecture. It's, it's in the older playlist, but it's, it's on my channel, but you know, we'll, we'll do a fresh lecture on this upcoming one day. So again, today, we're gonna be working on section, um, three point one work, so let's just hop over there. And this, okay. So, this question, let me see. I'm gonna have to do the best I can, I know my, my internet is going in and out, I don't really know why it's doing that. We'll, we'll have to work with it, um, so given this function, find G of negative one, right? So, we're evaluating a function, uh, for some value of X, on X negative one, if we plug negative one in, alright? If we plug negative one in, we're gonna have one minus negative one, so then that becomes a double negative, so that becomes positive. So then one plus one is two, three to the power of two, that result should be nine. I'm gonna go nine there. And just stop if, um, if I need to go back or redo anything or anything of that nature. For this function, evaluate when X is two point one. Uh, it says use the calculator if necessary, so I'm just gonna go ahead and get my calculator ready, cuz I normally need it for this one. Let me get the student. And my calculator looks good, I'm gonna refresh and reload. So, we have five to the power of one minus X, and X is two point one. I, I feel like you can, you should be able to, you should be able to see your calculator, so I'm just not gonna show it right now. Uh, but I'm doing five to the power of one minus two point one in parentheses. And it says type in your decimal, round to three decimal places, I got point one seven oh two. So that two does the round down, so I'm getting, um, zero point one seven, it's one seven oh, but you forgot the trailing oh. Okay. Let me get this in here. This guy. Okay. So given this function, find F of four. So when X is four, we're gonna have one minus four, which is negative three. So then, one half to the power of negative three, that negative, remember we did this one together? So that one over two, you can rewrite as two to the negative one, to the power of negative three. So then a double negative there becomes positive, so it's just two to the power of three, which is eight, if I need to show any of this or write out, just let me know, I know I'm kinda like speaking it. I feel like you can keep up with it, I wasn't doing it, but just, you know, in the chat or something, give my attention if I need to write some of this stuff out. Find exponential function of this form that contains the two points shown below, okay, I'm gonna write this one out actually. Trying something a little bit different with my stream as well, just trying to see if I can improve the quality, cuz like when I, when I watch other people's stream, the quality is like clear. When I look at mine, I'm like, why is mine like, the qualities like that, so I feel, I felt like it was something with my settings, so I was like, okay, well. Heck, and they just did more updates, like what is this? Wow, nice. This is interesting. Oh, they got music, oh, that's cool, so like, um, the app that I'm using, oh wow. Spacing, ooh, this is interesting, they've, um, they've done updates, like everybody's doing updates, so it's like, oh my goodness. There's so many grid lines. Sorry, I'm just bugging, cuz like, again, so I guess they just did some updates, so the feature is a little bit different, let me see if they've done the one that I feel like they need to do though. No. Like, I need to be able to select pages, that's okay, there, it might be there, but I don't see it, okay, anyway. So let me take some notes here. Uh, let's see, so this is question, do do, bido bido, where is it, question number three. This is question number three. Wait a minute, I need to reboot this thing cuz it's lagging. Give me just a moment, that can stay. Hopefully they fixed it. Okay, this is question number three, oh, sorry, this is question number four. Okay, it feels better, this is question number four, this comes from section, uh, the question ID is three point one point seven, so it comes from section three point one. Uh, question number seven from the back of the text. It says, find an exponential function of the form, that we wanna take on the form. F of X equals C times A to the power of X, that contains the two points, we have zero comma three. And two comma seventy-five, okay, let's take a look at this one, let's see. For our people on YouTube, we're gonna go like this. And for our audience here. Okay, so these are the notes that I just took, um, again, we wanna find an exponential function of this form. That passes through the, the two given points, right? So let's start with the first point, when X is zero, Y is three, let's plug that in, right? So then, F of zero, when X is zero. We're gonna have C times A. And X is what, zero, the answer is three, right? So then, A to the power of zero is one, so, so this term goes to one. One times C, ends up just being C, right? So then, C equals three, right, they gave us the initial point, so they made it a, they made one of the terms, one of the unknowns go away, so it drastically simplified it. So now, we found, we solve for one of the unknowns, so now we wanna take this and use the other point to find the other unknown. So now, when X is two, and I'm gonna write it a little bit, this is fine. So then, when X is two, C is, we just said that C is three, we don't know what A is, we're gonna say A to the power of two, cuz X is two, in this case. The output is seventy-five, right? So you can kinda ignore the part on the left, we're gonna focus on the two items on the right. The, basically, we're gonna focus on these guys. Okay? So here, let me just, for the sake of simplicity. Let me just pull out what we're focusing on, copy. Okay, we're just gonna focus on this. So now, if we wanna solve for A, at this point, it's algebra, oh, my battery's about to die. Like streaming, I mean, it's no joke, I, I still have a ways to go, I, I don't know if I need better equipment, or like more powerful equipment, a more powerful processor. I, I, but I follow, I mean, I was, I just started doing this because I was kinda inspired by like, people I follow, and they make a living doing this kinda stuff, um. But I still don't know, I think I, I might need some, um, better equipment, but anyway. Okay, so, we can divide both sides by three here, right? Those are gonna cancel, the equal sign just comes down, A squared is left. Uh, what is that, uh, two fifteen, which is what, five twenty-five, the root, right, and then you can take the square root on both sides. Now, whenever we introduce square root, what, what symbol do we, we need to include? Whenever we take the square root, we're supposed to do plus or minus, right? I think for the context of this question though, we're only gonna take the positive, cuz you, we, this doesn't work for a negative base, right, A, the base A can't be negative. So we're just gonna take the positive. Okay? Square root of twenty-five is five, so then A is gonna be five, right? So then, uh, the model should be F of X equals three times five to the power of X. So this should be the model that should satisfy, the exponential model that should, um, function, that should satisfy those two points, go through those two points. So, do a quick check. When X is zero, we get three, when X is two, five squared is twenty-five, times three is seventy-five, right, so we're gonna go with this result. Let's see, should be like this. Cool. Cool. Alright. And, we got three times five to the power of X, three times five to the power of X. Cool. Let me check something quickly. Interesting. It should be working. I think it's working. Okay, next question. Guys, you can ask questions, I know you might be nervous or shy to, but. I'm really just a tutor. Like, I, I don't mind working through the questions, like I, it doesn't bother me, um, but this is really intent, the intent, my intent was for it to be like a Q and A. Uh, there we go, uh, let me see, let's check the chat real quick. Uh, I'm, I am live streaming, yeah, but they can't, like, uh, it's only, I'm not showing all the screens, but I am live streaming, so there is a copy of this. Uh, graph the function on paper and then choose the correct graph, right? Okay, so it's base five, so all it is, is just a regular exponential function that has base five. So for instance, so really, with these answer choices. Let me see if I can, um, was that the wrong one? Okay, that's the right one. So with these results, right, um, only one that's behaving exponentially is this one. Right, this one is behaving kinda like a cubic function, so it's not A, that's the wrong function, this is linear, so B is the wrong function. C is actually logarithmic, I don't think we're gonna get into that right now, but that's the wrong function, right? That's, that's not the shape of an exponential. This is the shape of an exponential, it starts off flat, and then it takes off and grows like that, right, so the only one that's behaving exponentially is D, didn't have to plug anything in, you just needed the right shape. Okay, I'm gonna go to the next one. Sketch the graph of this function by making a table of values, use the calculator if necessary, okay? So, we have a, a exponential, exponential function with a, a negative exponent, right, so that should be exponential decay. Uh, yeah, and the base is larger than one, right? So this has exponential growth, exponential growth, so it has to be either C or D, it asks us to make a table of values, let's see. So, when X is zero, we get a one, are both of these one? It looks like it. I think, so when X is zero, they pass through one, let's do when X is negative one, if X is negative one. Then, the Y value should be two point five. So, let's see, I think these are going by ones, let me see, let's, let's pop this up. So the Ys, let me see, one, two, three, four, right, that each, each tick is one, so when X is negative one, two point five, that one looks good. Let's check this other one, so D looks good. When X is negative one, one, two, three, four, right? It should be two point five, one, two point five is here, right, so this one is not hitting the mark. So, uh, when working with exponentials, remember, I think at one point, we mentioned something about three key test values when working with exponentials? When X is negative one, when X is zero, and when X is one, those are, those are three key points to test on working with exponentials to identify graph. So it can't be C, C missing those, and only what passes through them are, are D, so we're gonna go. Onto the next one. How many questions we got? Twenty? We might, we might make it through this, uh, match the graph, uh, match the graph to one of the following functions. Okay. So if you think about. A regular exponential function starts off flat and goes up, but this is an exponential function, function that's been flipped top to bottom, right? So it's like the Y values went from positive Y to negative Y. So that means we're multiplying by negative outside the basic function, right? So if you think about a regular exponential function, but then you put your negative outside that function, right, so it should be negative times an exponential. The only one that does that, it looks like is C. Right, a negative on the outside. So it's, 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 all it is, is a regular exponential that's flipped, been flipped top to bottom, so from transformations. Uh, uh, flipping vertically is multiplying the outside of your basic function by a negative, so I'm just gonna go with C. Should be C, let's go with C. Let's see what happens. Okay, so that was, that was taken, the, the discussion on transformations and applying them to, uh, pixels. Use your knowledge of transformations to compare the graph of the function down below with the graph of F of X, okay, I think graph, okay. Alright, some more transformations, right, let's, uh, we can kinda zoom in a little bit. This is gonna have to do, let me see. Bring this down some. Where am I putting, is it, is this, okay, well, this, this four, four to the power of X plus one. All it is, is the, the, uh, exponential function, that plus one is outside our basic function, so that moves the whole graph up by one, right, it's a vertical change, let me get this student. Okay. So then, if we wanna graph it, let's, let's, let's graph this, right, the exponential tool is this one right here. This is log, uh, this is just the cursor, this is a square, like a parabola, this is a cubed, like X cubed. This is the log function, so it comes up, up along the vertical and it goes up to the right, that's not how an exponential behaves. This is the only one that's the exponential, so we're gonna click on that one, right? Uh, it says to plot, so I'm just gonna click somewhere random, really, okay. The base, the base should be four, and it looks like it's already there, so I'm not gonna mess with that. Uh, we moved it up, so that plus one causes that to move up by one. And I think that's it. Close this up, that looks good, it's just regular exponential, we shifted it up by one, I'm gonna hit save. And I'm gonna check. I think chat is kinda, oh, we got some activity in the chat, let's check it again. Yeah, um, you can go back and watch, yeah, that's, that's fine, um, you know, and it doesn't hurt to engage live either, you know. You know how that goes, okay. So, this is still kinda a play on transformations, right, so notice the base is two, we have one, two, three total transformations, right? My recommendation on multiple transformations, or when, I, you know, applying multiple transformations in a function. You, my recommendation is to work your way from the inside of the function to the outside, right, so let's, let's kinda redo what we did last time. Alright, it says, let's click on the exponential function tool. Click to plot, so I'm just clicking somewhere. The base is already two, now the first transformation is this minus one. That's inside our basic function, alright, so that should go to the right by one. So we wanna go right by one, okay? If we multi-, uh, if we multiply the outside by five, that's gonna cause a vertical stretch by a factor of five. So again, this is kind of a review on transformations. And then the plus three has us go up three. So that's a review on transformations, if, if this is uncomfortable, you definitely wanna go back to that section that we did on, um, transformations. And like, so this, this, this question of like, sometimes students ask, is the final cumulative? And like, generally by default, I'm a math exam's cumulative, because if I ask you anything, generally speaking, if I ask you things from the later sections. Is built on the stuff from the previous section, describe by the graph, can be obtained from the, um, this function? We say when, this is going to the right one unit, stretch vertically. It should be stretched vertically by a factor of five, but, let me see, what's wrong with some, that's the wrong direction, and that's the wrong direction, yeah, it's just A. There we go, no? I don't know, I'm not gonna worry about it. It's the time. Okay, another one, use transformations to graph the function, okay, so we're gonna click. Click to enlarge, uh, exponential tool. Click that, so I'm just gonna click somewhere, I just clicked on the origin. Now, if we're working away from the inside, the inside transformation's gonna be that minus four. So that's gonna move graph to the right, horizontal shift, four units, right, so we're going to the right. Four units, and then plus five causes it to go up, five units. We didn't multiply by any negatives or anything of that nature. Did it get it? It doesn't like it got it, let's. How do I? Use a given interactions. Okay, I'm, I'm just, there it is, now it took effect, okay, let me save. Okay, let's go with this. Okay. Let's try that one. Oh, uh, what equation represents the asymptote? So it's a horizontal, so that's gonna be Y equals five, right, it went from Y equals zero in the general sense, but because it's plus five, it became Y equals five. I capsized one. Okay. What's the domain? Um, from here, the very left to the very right is all reals. Type, type your answer in a little notation. So it'd be negative infinity to positive infinity. The range is the very bottom, so the lowest it goes is five, and it goes up to positive infinity, there's a caveat though, so it goes from five to infinity. Infinity, all gets a parentheses, and then in this case, you have to ask yourself, um, does five get parentheses, or does it get square bracket? I know it's very tempting to say a square bracket, cuz it looks like it actually lands on five. But if you zoom in, again, the whole point of exponentials, one of their main properties, it doesn't, it actually does not touch the, the asymptote. It looks like it does, but if you zoom in, you actually find space, it never actually reaches that asymptote, so the five gets, um. Parentheses means we get really, 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 really close to five, but we never reach it, right? That's infinitesimally close, like, almost indistinguishable, indistinguishable, but, like Ant-Man, if you were to shrink down to the molecular level and go in there. You would, you would see the distance space, right? That's, that's, and you, you wouldn't know that unless somebody, you'd have to, that concept would have to be introduced to you, right? But looking at it, trying to just brute force, is easy to think that, oh, it touches, but it doesn't. Right, that's the concept of, of the asymptote. Okay? Hopefully that makes sense. Write the equation of the graph, what number are we on, ten, we made it about halfway, okay? So my, my menu bar is frozen, I'm not gonna worry about it. Okay. Write an equation of the graph in its final position, the graph of this is translating two units to the left and then five units up. Two units left, oh, okay. So. Two units to the left, that's, that's plus two on the inside, so it has to be either C or D, and then five units up, the only one that goes up is, so it should be C. So that's some transformations. So far, this whole, this whole, oh, this whole section has been on transformation, transformation of exponential function. So, okay, this look might be a little different, use the, uh, form for simple interest and the given values to find the interest, right? So I equals P R T, we're multiplying, okay, I'll do a little bit of time here. So the interest is gonna be the principal, which is this sixteen nineteen, sixteen nineteen times. The rate, fifteen percent, we have to write as a decimal, so that's gonna be zero point one five. And the time, if it's six months, we have to convert months to years, so six months divided by twelve. Right, to convert, gives us zero point five, half a year. So then we need to multiply those out and get our result. Let's see. Sixteen nineteen. Times point one five, times point five. Whoops. Let's try that again. Sixteen nineteen, times point five. I rounded to decimal places, I got, so when I put this in my calculator, I got one to one point four two five. But if it was two decimal places, that five tells us to round up, so it should be point four three. Check the chat, the chat was okay. Make the stream. Stream sounds like it's okay as well. Let's keep going. If nineteen thousand dollars is a deposit into an account paying three percent compounded monthly. What will be the, what will be in the account after six years? How much interest will be earned during the six years of interest? So common interest, let's take some notes here. Okay. So, this is question number thirteen. This comes from section three point one, question forty-seven from the back of that section, now our principal, our P is nineteen thousand. Okay? The R is three percent. And, if it's monthly, it's gonna be twelve. And the T is six years, right? We want A, okay, I think that's all that we need. Let's hop over, let's go like this, like this. Let's hide everything else, okay? So, compound interest, let me see. It usually goes what, like? A of T, it's gonna be P times one plus R over N to the power of N T, alright, that's co-, that's the compound interest one. So, then, the amount after six years is gonna be the nineteen thousand. Times one plus, the rate as a decimal is zero point zero three. Compounding per year was twelve, because we're doing it monthly, and then it's gonna be that twelve times six, right? Uh, okay, so we can, let's just use the calculator here. Let me see, I think we're pretty much done with that. Uh, let's go like this. Calculator. Oh, I gotta reload you, oh, come on. I agree, choose the file. Um, let me see if I can get this working, I thought I saved it, was it this one? This, this is the latest one. Praise the Lord, okay, reload and refresh, cool, looks good, okay. We got lucky today. Okay? So, I'm just gonna, um. Put this in my calculator. So we have nineteen thousand times, um, we have one plus point zero three divided by twelve. Then we're gonna say to the power of, now, notice my use of parentheses, I'm gonna say twelve times six, both parentheses, alright? So you have to be deliberate and on purpose with your parentheses, and you have to use it properly, if you don't do the parentheses properly, it won't work. Okay, let me write this down. So then we got a result of. Twenty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars. And two cents, whoops. And two cents, right, after the six years. After the six years. So let's go with this. To the nearest cent, mhm. So we got twenty two seven forty two. Think the chat is okay. Alright, let's keep it moving. It's the time. Okay, we got a solid ten minutes. How much interest will be earned during the six years, so if we want the interest, we're basically gonna say that result minus the principal. Um, what's that difference, three? Thirty, thirty seven forty two O two, so about four thousand dollars? Thirty seven forty two point O two. I said that twenty two seven forty two point O two minus the nineteen thousand, and I think this is the result. Finding out the results from the given in- investment, twenty dollars invested at six percent compounded continuously after three years, right? Let's take some notes. Alright, so this is question number fourteen. This comes from section three point one, question forty nine. So our principal is twenty dollars, we started with twenty dollars. The rate is six percent. Uh, continuous compounding. I'm just gonna abbreviate that. And the time, it's three years. Okay. And then we want A of T. Let's hop here, like this, we can hide everything else. Make sure that's showing, that looks good, cool, okay. Oh, so, since we have continuous compounding, we have to use the continuous compounding formula. So that's pert, A of T equals P E to the RT, that's for continuous compoundings, I call it pert, that's just the way I remember it. Okay, so then we want the amount after six years, so the principal was twenty dollars. Times E to the, the R is six percent as a decimal, is point zero six. And the time is three years, alright? So then. Here comes our trusty dusty rusty. Calculator. Let's see, one other thing. If I go like this. No, that doesn't, that's okay. So then we're gonna have twenty times E to the power of point zero six times three. Okay. Hmm, if we were talking about money, wow, six years, eesh. That's tough, that's like painful to, but I mean, we only started with twenty dollars, but still, oh my goodness. Uh, and ninety four cents, if you round properly, right? So it earned three dollars and ninety four cents, I mean, it's still our money, which is cool, but man. Come on, we can't, can't do two, two thousand in the account for six years. Now, it's funny that they were doing this, because, um. You know, notice that these rates are like six percent, five percent. Only thing that I've had access to recently that behaved like actually ten percent, but it's very, it's high, highly risky and highly volatile are stocks. Like, I did a little bit Forex trading, I'm realizing that those are more so like, you gotta treat them like savings account, like high risk savings account, where it's a good chance you could lose your money. But there's also a chance that it can just like grow exponentially, right? It's like, the only thing that I have access to, and you all have access to it too, you can actually trade on like, um, Cash App. Um, that's why, that was the first time I, cuz I was trying to figure out like, how do you trade? First place I was able to do was, was Cash App, I was like this close from being a part of that, um, AMC. Oh, shit, we may have lost, lost our forum. Well, I think whatever question we had to adjust, get back to where we were, cuz this is like, I was, I was, I had just been searching like about stocks timing, I wasn't ready. And then I saw this guy, he was like, yo, I just made seventeen million dollars, I was like, what? And I went and checked like Robinhood and all this, I was like, oh, I just missed it. But, in my studies, it says that like, you know, that whole thing about, that fear of missing out, you have to get over that, like, like. Um, again, I'm no financial guru, you gotta research and talk with like professionals and things of that nature. But there is this thing about like managing your emotions, because it's very emotional, like. One minute you'll be up more money than you ever seen in your life, and then if you're not careful, you could very easily lose it all, alright? And it could be emotional, so you kind of have to, like, the guy was following this, this guy that goes by the name of Adam Quo, he like teaches on YouTube, he's actually pretty good. Or it's interesting, uh, but his recommendation is like, you gotta have a plan, stick to the plan, and abandon your emotions, like, cuz if you. If you, cuz a lot of times if you're emotional, you'll get out too early, and if you had just waited and stuck to your plan, you actually would have been ahead. He says things like, you know, you risk maybe one point five percent of your capital to gain like three percent, his is more like day trading and like. Whatever. The one, next one, it's like four different categories, you got scalpers, day trading, and then you got people that sit for like on weeks at a time. And you got the long term, which sits on the like months at a time. Right, and so his, his style seems to be more so day trading and the one that's like weekly, it's not really scalping. Um, anyway, but the reason I went into that is because. It might go down by five percent, up by fifteen percent, so then it averages out to ten percent overall, like, that's kind of like what happens with, with those. But that's something, but the, the rate of investment is much higher, right? You can anticipate ten percent or higher. Uh, but it's, it's volatile, it's, it's a good chance you can lose, um, your original investment. Let me see, this one did change, um. Five and four years, let me, let me account for those adjustments, and then. Try that one, instead of rewriting it, I think it's still in my calculator, so I'm just gonna recall. Uh, we still started with twenty dollars, but instead of point zero six, now it's point zero five, and we're going for four years. Okay, so now I get forty three, twenty, twenty four forty three, twenty four forty three. Twenty four forty three, I think that's okay. Okay, so wha- whatever we did before, I just changed the percent and the years, um, I see the time. We're gonna kind of keep going though. Find a, uh, find a principle that would generate the future value of thirteen thousand on this compound annually, okay, we need to take some notes here. So this is question fifteen. This comes from section three point one, question fifty one. Uh, we wanna, we wanna solve for P. It says that the future amount is thirteen thousand. Okay, the rate is six percent. And N equals one, so it's compounded annually, and the time is nine years. Okay. Let's hop here like this, and make sure it's showing for our people there. Okay, and let's go like this. I'm watching the clock, I see we're almost, we got like a few minutes, so. Uh, okay, I think we're still using compound interest here, so let me get a copy of that formula. A of T. P times one plus R over N to the power of N T, alright, okay? So now let's plug in what we have, the future amount is what, thirteen thousand? We're solving for P, one plus the rate, six percent as a decimal, point zero six. Compounding is one, and then one times nine years, alright? So notice that everything to the right of P, like everything in the parentheses, that's just some number, we're gonna have some number to the power of nine. So then if we have some number times P, and we wanna solve for P, we're gonna divide both sides by that number. Hopefully that makes sense, right, so what I'm saying is, if we divide both sides by that number, we'll get P equals. On bottom, we're gonna have one plus zero point zero six to the power of one times nine. And on top, we're gonna have the thirteen thousand, alright? So that's, that's what we need to calculate. Okay, so on my calculator, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna say thirteen thousand divided by open parentheses. That part inside the parentheses is really just one point O six, one point O six. To the power of nine, one times nine is just nine, and then I'm gonna put all that in parentheses like this, I think this is okay. Alright, now we'll get a result. If we're talking about money. So it says that we need to start with approximately, and this is cuz I'm going around, approximately. Seventy six ninety four point six eight. So let's try that result. Okay, we're gonna hop back here. It is showing there, this is the last one, probably guys go, cuz we're out of time. So we need to start with one to two decimal places as needed, seventy six ninety four, seventy six ninety four point sixty eight. Okay, let's go with that. Okay, we got through most of them, we, we're just about done. But, um, let me see if there's anything else that's interesting. Sketch the graph, check, shifted, so this is more transformation. Okay. So I think I'm gonna leave the rest as an exercise, if, if you need, if you guys need me to see, to see something, you just have to bring it up during class. Um, if there aren't any burning questions, let me do this really quickly, let's go paper.